Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome, everyone, to the February 13th, 2023 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. That's planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then, upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll.
Bernstein?
Here.
Bowden?
Yeah.
Fuzzah?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Handy?
Here.
Krev?
Here.
Lauk? Commissioner Lauk? Saria?
Here.
Orton? Commissioner Orton? Rodriguez?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
You have a corn, sir.
All right, thank you. First, before we get started, I wanted to make an announcement. Item 2B, TACPA 22-25 Comprehensive Plan MAP Amendment, was misnoticed, so it is being continued to 3/13/23. All right, so I just wanted to make that announcement in case anybody was here for that item. All right, our first item of business now is Item 2A, TACPA 22-12 Comprehensive Plan MAP Amendment, 5215 West Tyson Avenue. And the presenter is Jennifer Malone.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present on TACPA 2212 at 5215 West Tyson Avenue. This is a privately initiated amendment. It is small scale at only 6.54 acres, and the request before you tonight is from heavy industrial to community mixed-use 35. It's in the South Tampa Planning District, the Gandy/Sun Bay South neighborhood. It is also located entirely within the coastal high hazard area. Here's an aerial of the subject site. As you can see, it's located along West Tyson Avenue. This little peninsula is what we refer to as Rattlesnake Point. There's a number of heavy industrial and industrial uses on the point, but there are a lot of entitlements, and we'll get to that later, for residential development in the surrounding area. This aerial is a little outdated because this whole area to the east right here has been redeveloped as the Westshore Marina District. And you see we're south of Gandy Boulevard, and then we have Southwestshore Boulevard over here to the east. At this, we're facing west along West Tyson Avenue, and the entrance to the subject site is on the right. And here's another view of the entrance to the subject site. As you can see, there's the CSX railroad tracks. I'm looking into the subject site facing north. And then, this is West Tyson Avenue facing east, so this would be our view if we were leaving West Tyson Avenue, and that's the subject site over there on the left-hand side of the screen. So here's the adopted future land use map. The adopted future land use is heavy industrial. That's represented by that very dark gray, almost black color. There's also community mixed-use 35 on the Rattlesnake Point. That's the pink color. Urban mixed-use 60, which is the purple, is to the east of the subject site. A lot of that has been redeveloped, as I mentioned earlier, as the Westshore Marina District. And then, we have Publix, semi-Publix in the north along West Gandy Boulevard. And you can see the request. This is the proposed future land use map, if the request is granted, to community mixed-use 35. So this would allow residential development on the subject site. Right now, that is prohibited under the heavy industrial future land use category. If approved, there'd be potential for up to 228 dwelling units. It would also increase the amount of square footage under the floor area ratio from about 400,000 square feet to about 500,000 square feet. The applicant can use floor area ratio for residential development only if it's mixed use. So that 228 dwelling unit number could be higher if the applicant is proposing a mixed-use development. They can get all the way up to 569,000 square feet of non-residential and residential as a mixed. There were objections from the City of Tampa staff. We sent this out to all the reviewing agencies, as usual, and we did receive some objections from their staff. Before I go into the policies, I'll give a brief site history. In 2006, 2007 timeframe, there were several future land use map amendments on Rattlesnake Point. This did trigger an objection from the Florida Department of Community Affairs. That's now the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. So the city adopted policy language that outlined the preferred development for Rattlesnake Point in response to that objection. And there was, there's a transition plan mentioned in the comprehensive plan that involved all property owners and prohibited residential development until heavy industrial was relocated, the existing heavy industrial on the point. Some of you might remember, some of you might remember this language that was in the comprehensive plan. However, in 2016, there was a privately initiated text amendment to remove the requirement for a transition plan out of the policy direction related to Rattlesnake Point because Rattlesnake Point has special policy direction in the comprehensive plan. So that transition plan policy direction was removed. There is still a process to allow non-industrial development to occur through rezoning requirements within the CMU 35 designation. So staff has seen a lot of rezonings recently, so about four since 2019, for residential development on those community mixed-use 35 parcels. And every time staff has reviewed those, because the Planning Commission staff reviews those for consistency and provides a finding to Tampa City Council, we are making sure that they're meeting all of the intent of those policies. They're very specific on the type of how residential development is to occur on Rattlesnake Point in that future land use category. So we did find that this was applicable with several comprehensive plan policies. This would provide housing. Right now, housing is prohibited on the site, so the plan does seek to ensure that there's an adequate supply available to meet Tampa's growing population. This would also further the policy to upgrade the corridors to transition from non-residential uses to a more mixed-use development pattern. And it would also meet the subjective, which states that Rattlesnake Point shall transition from a mix of heavy and light industrial uses to residential and commercial uses. So this map amendment would certainly meet that objective. However, staff did find that it was inconsistent with several other policies in the comprehensive plan, most notably the no-net increase of residential density in the coastal high hazard area and the fact that it would increase densities within this area of the city. And the applicant did not demonstrate no net impact on hurricane evacuation times, routes, and shelter demands. There was a technical memo included in the application that Planning Commission staff reviewed and spoke to the applicant about. So there's that documentation and the applicant's response in your packet. There was also a memo transmitted late last week from the applicant that they would like, that they'll likely speak on regarding the legal implications of this case. Sean College is also online if you have any questions about the technical Planning Commission review of the shelter times or the evacuation times routes that was in the application. So with that, Planning Commission staff found this inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And I'm not sure if we have city staff here to speak, but I will turn over to the applicant or I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Applicant, please come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. Elise Batzel, 401 East Jackson Street, Sterns Weaver Miller. On behalf of the applicant, we are here tonight with Randy Cohen, who prepared the hurricane evacuation study, our transportation expert; Tina Ekblad, our Director of Planning, who has submitted documentation into the material and helped prepare the application materials showing the consistency with denial of this application and compatibility if that doesn't go through; Mark Sen and Rhodes Seeger, both from Southeastern Development, are here to answer any questions from a development perspective. Jennifer already noted that this is located on Rattlesnake Point. I think we all know where it is, so I will skip that slide. I want to start really with the policy, the Rattlesnake Point policy. And it specifically says it will encourage the transition of the Rattlesnake Point waterfront area from its current mix of heavy and light industrial uses to a mix of residential, commercial, retail uses in a waterfront community in a manner that protects the public health, safety, and welfare. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that. So this policy was really a first step in that vision of transitioning Rattlesnake Point. Now, as you saw, most of this transition has already occurred today. As we like to say, the ship has kind of already sailed on Rattlesnake Point. But land use objective 8.11 is specific only to that geographic area, and that's incredibly important. And in fact, as early as the 1980s, the city envisioned this transition through a document called the Gandy Gateway. It was the precursor to the policies that you see today as the Rattlesnake Point policies. So before we talk about the application itself, I thought it might be helpful for you to see a visual of the comprehensive plan transition and how this actually evolved over time. As you can see, the areas in pink are all now today CMU 35. And this peninsula and its surrounding areas really began to transition in 2002, and it's continued to transition away from industrial to commercial, residential, mixed use for that entire period of time. So today's request, as Jennifer indicated, would be to also transition this piece, this 6.54 acres, to commercial mixed-use 35, like the majority of the rest of the peninsula, further implementing really the Rattlesnake Point policies. So it is one of the last properties to transition. This is a little bit misleading, the map, with the heavy industrial located because if you look at the two pieces that are still heavy industrially designated, they aren't really being used as heavy industrial. We have the Army Training Facility to the north, which would be permitted as a commercial use. And you have Hula Bay, which is a marina, a dry dock, a restaurant. So even though the future land use designation is heavy industrial, chemical formulators is the only existing heavy industrial use on this peninsula today. Oh, just as a quick note, the area designated as CMU 35, if you take out chemical formulators, 82.6% of the acreage has already transitioned. And the only areas that are left heavy industrial other than chemical formulators, that's 17.4% of the peninsula. Now, we are really limited on time, and there are a lot of legal concepts that go into what we're arguing today. So we did provide a memo to you that you could hopefully read before. But there are certain tenants of interpreting a comprehensive plan that are really important and well-settled law in Florida. Sure, Mr. Robinson can agree. One is that the specific policies control over the more general policies. That is an already adopted tenant of Florida law. The second is that these policies have to be read in harmony to avoid rendering a provision illusory. So what that means is, if the coastal high hazard was intended as a litmus test, I think you mentioned a litmus test in a prior hearing, then the Rattlesnake Point policies would be meaningless. They would have no effect at all, and that just doesn't make sense. The expression of one is the exclusion of another. In other words, the specific mention of the conversion to residential, commercial really expressly prohibits this property from converting to anything else on Rattlesnake Point. And finally, an interpretation has to avoid an unreasonable or absurd result. So if you look at it just from a practical perspective, if you have the coastal high hazard policies and they prevent all an increase in residential density, and it is, in fact, a litmus test, there could never be another unit on Rattlesnake Point, and therefore, the policies that were specifically adopted for this peninsula don't have any meaning whatsoever. So your staff has already indicated that there are many policies applicable to this application that support finding it consistent. So we kind of thought through and we thought, well, what does this all mean, right? And it's really whether this coastal management objective and its implementing policies are a policy or are they the policy? And that's really the big question before you tonight, a policy or the policy. We really believe that the Planning Commission is taking the position that the coastal high hazard is the policy because of the public health, safety, and welfare. We understand. Hurricane Ian just happened. We saw what happened in Fort Myers, and I think we're all really cognizant of the issues of resiliency and what happens in the coastal high hazard area. But there are a couple of documents. In fact, Kevin, if you could just submit those into the record, you don't need to read these now. We can refer to them if you have questions. But the first thing that we've provided to you is a study that was presented by your Planning Commission back in 2020. And it was entitled, I think it was prepared by Tatiana Gonzalez. It was entitled "Development in the Coastal High Hazard Area: A Best Practice Policy Analysis." So I know that the Planning Commission has been grappling with these issues and studying these issues for a long period of time. In that report, Mrs. Gonzalez concludes that the language in Objective 121 is, and I quote, "too vague and should be reevaluated." We agree, and I think many of you from the discussions that we've heard about the coastal high hazard also agree that it is time to reevaluate how we look at these issues. And I understand that the planning staff, Commission staff, is probably doing that right now. The second document that we put together shows all of the comprehensive plan amendments in the last five years that increased residential density within the coastal high hazard area. And there's a lot of them. It shows that the number of applications were approved and found consistent. Now, we know every single application is different. And so the Planning Commission may have had different reasons, but if it's a litmus test, if it's truly a bar from having any new residential units in the coastal high hazard, I don't know how these would have been approved, and now ours cannot be approved. So to take that stance that prohibits that increase in residential density just doesn't take into account the net population increase that we're experiencing and the state requirement that says we have to provide for this population growth in our comprehensive plan. So again, is the coastal high hazard area restriction a litmus test that would prevent any residential development increases? I think that's really the question of the evening. So you have to look also at the legal status of the plan, right? The legal governing document of the plan. And it says as follows, "All policies will be considered in making legal determinations of consistency with the Tampa Comp Plan pursuant to state laws and statutes." I think the staff report acknowledges that a number, if you look at the screen, a number of land use objectives and policies go in favor of recommending approval. The only thing is the conservative approach that we don't want to recommend approval because of the coastal high hazard area. The second sort of statutory construction principle is that it is a policy and not the policy, is that the specific Rattlesnake Point policies are really limited to the small geographic area and control over the general coastal high hazard policies. That's just simply the way that Florida law reads. In addition, you can't interpret an objective or a policy here, the coastal high hazard area, to have an effect of rendering the other policy meaningless. We've talked about that already. That would be an unreasonable result. So what is the proper analysis? Staff actually did exactly what we're talking about when they weighed the coastal high hazard and industrial in their own staff report. They analyzed the Rattlesnake Point policies against the industrial and said, "The comprehensive plan recognizes industrial lands as key economic engines that promote a range of employment activities in the center, in the city." However, the plan also specifically identifies the Rattlesnake Point as an area of the city that will require transition from its mix of uses to residential, commercial, and retail. The only legal way to read that is the way that they interpreted it through with the industrial policies. It just was not also applied to the Rattlesnake Point policies. So I want to take a step back here and talk about why the coastal high hazard policies are so important and why we believe staff wants them to be interpreted more conservatively, and we understand that approach. Comprehensive plans that direct population away from the coastal high hazard, they're worried about the public health, safety, and welfare, right? You're worried about evacuation times. Now, we have submitted a hurricane evacuation study, staff's comments, and then our response to those comments. They're all in your record. But I think everyone understands that hurricane evacuation times and evacuation issues are regional and state issues. It's very hard to apply those on a project-by-project basis. You know, and let's step back a little further. This is not 1970s construction that we're talking about, this new construction on Rattlesnake Point. It is all-new construction. It'll meet the new modern building code. It'll be elevated. And the idea is that if people evacuate, they're going to have something to come back to. This isn't a barrier island. So things are different now with new construction than they were back in the '70s. But I think we need to talk about the real, practical, public health, can somebody say that the right way for me? Public health, safety, and welfare issues. So if you look at this map, you will see that this is where the train comes throughout all of Tampa, all the way down through downtown Tampa, by UT, through all of these areas in South Tampa through neighborhoods. And chemical formulators has chlorine gas coming in on those various trains. And whether it's chemical formulators or it's another heavy industrial user, the fact that we are carting chemicals through our city, all the way through onto Rattlesnake Point, one way in, one way out, is a different public health, safety, and welfare issue that we need to consider. So if you think of minimal hurricane evacuation issues versus some of these more serious issues having hazardous substances located directly adjacent to residential, I see another scale here. And I see that one, in the general layperson's opinion, is more important than the other. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Tina Ekblad, our Director of Planning, who's going to provide brief testimony on the compatibility of this issue.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Tina Ekblad with Sterns Weaver Miller. As you consider this request tonight, I would just ask you to keep in mind a couple of main points. And the first is that denying this application for a map amendment tonight will maintain an island of heavy industrial in an area where 80% of the land use has transitioned to mixed use and promoting that vision of Rattlesnake Point in Objective 8.11. Secondly, the city does not have a commercial-only future land use category. And so to implement the transition as desired in Objective 8.11, we have to seek a mixed-use future land use category, which introduces residential into the coastal high hazard area. This is a foundational structure of the city's comprehensive plan and a policy that has been decided and implemented to promote mixed use, not single-use categories. To not allow this request would be to prohibit map amendments to permit residential in the coastal high hazard across the board. And then, as you've heard, the on-the-ground uses for the adjacent properties are not the same as the heavy industrial category on the future land use map. They are more commercial in nature with the Army Training Facility and then the commercial marina of Hula Bay rather than an industrial marina. And finally, it is my professional opinion that the request does protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Specifically, Policy 8.11.4 requires any development within Rattlesnake Point, including this one, to mitigate its own impacts. The policy stops there, mitigate all of its impacts. And then it goes on in this section regarding Rattlesnake Point to include Policy 8.11.6 regarding transportation and 8.11.7 regarding hurricane shelter space. These are built into the policies regarding Rattlesnake Point, and they're also codified into the city's Land Development Code. So you can be assured that this mitigation will be provided at the next step. That concludes my comments. Oh, I did not qualify myself as a certified planner. I am certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners since 2010. I'd be happy to answer any questions about my resume.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now, we are going to open it up to public comments on this one. And we have a couple here. Let's see if we have anything online really quick. Who was that for? Nope, nope, nope. All right, we're all in the room then. So we will start off with C.A. Bennett. And remember, keep in mind, we have three minutes per person here.
Let me set my timer. It goes fast, I know. Hi, my name's Carol Ann Bennett. I'm a lifelong resident of South Tampa. I've been involved for the last four years in the goings-on at Rattlesnake Point. I grew up in South Tampa, and one of the great things about it was, everybody I knew, their parents, when I was growing up, they all worked in South Tampa, except for mine. So originally, the citizens of South Tampa, they did not want the transition of Rattlesnake Point. They wanted it to stay commercial and industrial because it provided lots of good jobs. What happened in 2006, what happened in 2016, we didn't really understand what was happening, and we weren't there to organize against it. By the time we got involved, the horse had already escaped the barn door, so to speak. We worked very hard to stop all those four that they spoke about, the four rezonings. We worked very hard to stop them. And we were unsuccessful because of what had happened prior to that. So, yes, we would have preferred the entire peninsula estate, commercial and industrial. But we're grownups. You deal with the cards you're dealt. That's not the reality of what happened. We were able to be involved in those four rezonings, and we were able to mitigate the impact, we were able to improve the designs, and then we had to accept the fact that it is going to be residential. And now we have embraced it. So Southeastern, more so than any other company that has developed on Rattlesnake Point, wanted to build something that the community would like. They reached out to us in the most infancy of these ideas. They met at the Civic Center. They brought a television. They explained to all the residents what was going on. They've done it the way it should be done. They're building a project. It's a good project. Rattlesnake Point is going to be residential, and that's fine with us now. We understand that. But we need to get rid of CFI. It is so dangerous. It is, the Homeland Security, CFI has to file with Homeland Security every year, their plan. Homeland Security has identified chlorine plants as one of the most vulnerable targets in the United States. If I were a terrorist and I wanted to strike MacDill, I wouldn't strike MacDill. I would strike CFI. They're eight miles away, four miles away, something like that, as the crow flies. An explosion at CFI is going to go for 14 miles. And those trains carrying those dangerous chemicals go through the most heavily populated part of our city. Just recently, there was a derailment of a train in Ohio. They had hazardous chemicals. The rural community was evacuated for days. I want you to think about that would have been like going through downtown in South Tampa. CFI needs to go. Please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Pointer.
My name's Stephanie Pointer. I am the President of the Gandy Civic Association where this particular property is located. I've not heard from any of our neighbors that think that getting rid of CFI is a bad idea. I'd like to point out to you that in 2005, a train derailed in a small town called Graniteville, South Carolina. I personally called the police chief of Graniteville, South Carolina, and said, "How far away was this factory?" He said it was about a football field away from where the train derailed. It killed nine people. Eighty-seven people spent time in the hospital. The city, the folks in that city, 15 years later, they studied it, and those folks still had lung issues. They had children who grew up in enormous, who had health issues because of that train derailment with the chemicals that they make at CFI. Just like Carol Ann, I spend a lot of time working for our community. We didn't like what was happening at Rattlesnake Point. We have fought it tooth and nail. There are 1,600 apartments coming just on Rattlesnake Point. That doesn't include the West Shore Marina District, which has got over a million square feet of residential space that is not a football field away. So please take that into consideration. If you think about this, it makes no sense now to say it's inconsistent. I'm sorry. But it makes no sense because all it takes is a small leak. And they've had them before. It's been 20 years ago, 25 years ago. But this is a lesser of two evils event. We don't want the density, but unfortunately, it is a rite of passage. We need to get rid of CFI. It's too dangerous to be in the middle of a city. And there's been research done that shows, just like Carol Ann said, 14 miles. 14 miles. That's here, folks. You would be exposed here. And every single person that I talked to in the city said, "Oh, well, we would have to go away from it." Actually, what you're supposed to do is hunker down and turn off your air conditioners. So take that into consideration. This is not, this is a really good plan for something that's already went down the wrong road, and this is a way to correct it. We need to get rid of CFI. It is a much larger danger than the coastal high hazard area in this particular situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pointer. All right. Next up, we have Randy Cohen. Oh, okay. Then, I believe that was it. We have one more person here marked "yes," but they didn't say what it was for, so I'll call them. Michael Shinoda? Michael Shinoda? Did you want to speak to this item?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. And that's all we had sign up in the public comment for this item. So I will give it back to the applicant now for a three-minute rebuttal response.
We have no further comments. We'll be here to answer any questions that you have with the development team.
All right. Thank you very much. Then we will turn it over to the Commissioners for comments, discussions, questions on this item. Yes, Commissioner Buzzard?
Probably for staff. Reading the report, it does seem to lead that the coastal high hazard is the sole determinant for declining this request. Does that indeed become a litmus test, if we're going to increase any density to the CHHA? That, we've approved a fair bit of that, obviously already on the point. So if you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff. That's an excellent question. We did feel that it was a very strong policy, you know, no net increase. And weighing that against everything else, you know, we just felt that there was no way that that could be resolved and come to a consistency on this, hence staff's recommendation of inconsistent.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, I have some questions, but I think at the outset, I might pose this, starting with staff. The presenter made a strong case in a number of areas, I thought, but I still come down to what I understand to be a very specific objective that does govern this project, and that is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. I don't profess to be an expert on those issues, but we are Planning Commission, and we're sort of grappling with it in this context. And throughout the comments we've heard since, there seems to be this notion that a vote in favor of consistency is a de facto vote against this entity, CFI, or the transportation of chlorine through the South Tampa Peninsula. And I'm struggling with that because I don't see that as being an issue that's in front of our commission today, except by extension. So help me understand if I'm missing something there, because that's my reading of it, and that is not in any way to disrespect, you know, the comments before us. I'm a resident of South Tampa, so I can relate to some of those arguments. I'm just trying to struggle with what's in front of us and focus where the focus needs to be.
Sure. Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff. If I understand your question correctly, you're saying that what's in front of you is a plan amendment, and a recommendation from this body of inconsistent or inconsistent wouldn't necessarily change the fact of this use going away. And that is accurate. You know, that would happen at a rezoning stage. I would also add, there's two health, safety, and welfare issues before you tonight with the chemical formulators and the coastal hazard area. And staff, you know, took that into consideration. We were writing our report.
Maybe it's not fair to ask you this, just one quick follow-up thank you for that. I don't think there's anyone here from chemical formulators who's going to be speaking today. So sadly, you know, you're stuck answering some of these questions for them. Are you aware of anything that would preclude them or anyone else from simply transporting chlorine through South Tampa through some other mechanism if this one's denied? I mean, I'm really trying to get my hands around what a consistency vote means in practice for that process.
Okay. So by denial, you're saying if the recommendation is still, if this remains heavy industrial, would they still be taking chemicals?
Well, I guess maybe put it a different way. If we leave here today with a vote that essentially rejects the staff recommendation and finds consistency, does that in and of itself, to your knowledge, preclude CFI from transporting chlorine through South Tampa?
I'm looking at Melissa's ornithologist.
That's probably more fair to direct it to Ms. Ornithologist.
It's a great question, but yeah.
Yeah. So to be clear, chemical formulators is on the plan amendment site right now. It's allowed as a heavy industrial use. If they were to amend to CMU 35, the CMU only allows light industrial, right, Jennifer?
I don't even believe that it allows light industrial.
So the industrial use would no longer be permitted. Now, they could continue because they're unapproved use, but they would, anything that they wanted to change about their site would need to be in conformance with the CMU category. So I think it's the first step in them moving off. There's nothing that requires them to move off of the property. They could stay there with the CMU 35 until they needed to make some sort of change.
Yeah. I would just add, it would be probably nonconforming with the zoning and the land use. There'd be a disconnect there.
That's helpful. Thanks to you both. I'll come back at some point when I think of something else even more confusing, but that should do it for now.
Thanks for the questions.
Commissioner Handy?
I'm a little uncomfortable with the lesser of two evils side of this. It really, I think maybe the applicant alluded to that there's maybe a flaw in our zoning process. So it's either, you know, it's one evil or another evil because of that. So it's almost like we're being held hostage. If we want to get rid of these dangerous trains, then we have to agree to a dangerous high-density zoning in the coastal high hazard area. I'm not comfortable with that. And I think there is a, I mean, there's a reason that we have implemented the coastal high hazard area, and we've changed our maps, and we have said no net density increases. And that is about public health, safety, and welfare. So I understand the, I think, kind of sort of the issue at hand, but it's really not one of, well, let's just approve this because it's better than what we got. Because I'm just not comfortable with that line of reasoning.
Thank you, Commissioner Handy. Commissioner Fernandez?
It seems to me like more the problem that we have is the policy with no net density increase in coastal high hazards, and maybe it's specifications that we need inside of that. Because we're in Florida. People come here to be by the water. That's why we're here. That's why people are moving here every day. It seems to me more so, you know, as we go through these, you know, maybe it's what type of residential it is that we put in that coastal high hazard area. Because in my own way, I've said on the other side of this argument where things come up, and I say, "No, we shouldn't put low-income, you know, low-income housing or, you know, workforce housing in those areas." Of course not. It makes no sense. These people are having to pay rent and live somewhere where they're already in a difficult position. Why put them in a harder one? But if somebody's going to build condos, and they're going to pay and decide to live there because that's where they want to live, well, that's their choice.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardenas. Commissioner Kreis?
Is the City of Tampa prepared to speak? I think the recommendation was inconsistent from the city as well.
Stephen Benson, City of Tampa. Good evening. We don't issue a finding of consistency. We offer comments and objections if we notice that there's a policy that might support an inconsistency finding. And so the policy that we've cited is 1.1.6, which I believe was in the Planning Commission Staff Report for no net increase in the CHHA. And that was our only policy that we noted.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bernstein?
So circling back on this, and I appreciate Commissioner Handy's comments, and my counterpoint to that, I suppose, and maybe this is what Commissioner Cardenas was alluding to, is there seems to be direct tension between the concept of zero net density in a coastal high hazard area and objectives like land use 8.11. You cannot reconcile these two things. It's impossible. I think we've tried with limited success to do similar things, and it's been kind of a pyrrhic effort. And so, you know, I find that, you know, some of the points made at the outset, which were really points that take me back to my first semester contracts course in law school, have some application here. We have specific policies, and we have general policies, and we're going to be wrestling with which control, with not a lot of guidance out there from what I can tell. So we're kind of doing it without a net. But I'm troubled, and most of you know my position on this because it hasn't wavered. I've been troubled by a coastal high hazard. We don't have to call it a litmus test if we don't want to, but it sometimes feels like an absolute despite the fact that we may have any number of countervailing policies and objectives. And here, the coastal high hazard area, I think, to the applicant's point, is advanced, I think even staff would say, really, as the dominant concern. And yet, it's a very general concern. And in a region that is growing by leaps and bounds, I think, you know, I am also persuaded by the folks who are going to be most immediately impacted by this who spoke today. And I'm just going to say, I'm just as troubled by this concept of a coastal high hazard policy without a lot of granular definition as I have been for the last year. And I'm glad this is before us in a way because it really crystallizes this issue in ways a lot of these applications have not. And so, you know, I'm not inclined to support the staff's recommendation absent a more rigorous argument establishing that Objective 8.11 should somehow, you know, be subservient to that. The public health, safety, and welfare should be paramount in any number of decisions we make, but it seems to me a cogent argument can be made that the public health, safety, and welfare is as much threatened as supported by a finding of inconsistency.
Good point, Commissioner. Did you want to?
If I could just mention one thing you brought up there, and a couple of you all mentioned, is there's, one of the challenges that the applicant mentioned in the City of Tampa comprehensive plan is that all of the land use categories, absent like recreation and open space, or heavy industrial and light industrial, have a residential density associated with them. So that's something we're looking at as part of the land use assessment. We're also working with the City of Tampa on a coastal area action plan, which we believe will provide some policy recommendations addressing the coastal hazard area. None of that helps you tonight necessarily, but I do want you to know that we see what's happening and understand the recommendations you all have been making. And the challenge that is ahead of us is that, I mean, given that you've got one objective that's talking about transitioning Rattlesnake Point to mixed use, the only other way to infuse any other uses besides heavy industrial in there is to go to a land use category or light industrial that goes to a category that has residential. So if we had a commercial office land use category or something like that, you might could say there are some other options available to them. But the options are limited to creating that mix. We do believe the applicant, that there's an interest in doing residential in that area, but, you know, the CMU 35 doesn't necessarily limit them to residential. It could be a number of other uses as well.
It's a really good point. And the only other thing I'll say is, you know, the density piece of this matters, right? I don't know if we'd be hearing the same comments if hypothetically we were wrestling with a 100-story sky rise with, you know, pouring 5,000, 10,000 people in a Rattlesnake Point. But I think what a lot of us struggle with is that, once the CHH concept comes up, it seems to take on a life of its own regardless of what that density and intensity look like. That's just my own opinion.
One other thing that I forgot to mention is that, so the objectives and the policies and the comprehensive plan, they don't have any weighting to them in how the plan is drafted. They're all essentially, you know, equal. And that's the evaluation that staff makes and then that you all have to make. And you may weigh different objectives and policies differently than staff did. City Council may weigh them differently than all of us do, and that's a part of the process. So I don't think it's something that staff is not anticipating, that you might not always see things the same way we do.
All right. Commissioner Buzzard?
Just to kind of clarify, at least for myself, the, I don't know if the right word is red herring, but the chemical formulators' argument clouds this decision-making process. I think I would ask all the Commissioners to kind of put that away because we're not talking about chemical formulators portfolio number today. We're talking about this subject property. So I think you can't make a decision on one piece of property hoping it affects a neighbor. That's not what we're here to do. And I feel with Commissioner Bernstein about the coastal high hazard area being, there being no flexibility of that, I think there is some work to be done on there. But people do come to Florida, and they want to live by the water. And new construction has come a long way, engineering of it. So I would be supportive of a consistency finding myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Buzzard. Did you have a response, Ms. Ornithologist?
Yes. I just want to be very clear. This piece of property, the subject of the plan amendment, is where chemical formulators is located.
The parcel west?
No, it's on the parcel that we're talking about. So, yeah, it's not a neighbor. It's the parcel.
Commissioner Cardenas?
I was just going to jump off based on what you said. The only flexibility in it is us.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yeah, I'm just going to throw my support behind the building. It's, you know, a man-made piece of land. Looks to me it's over six feet. They can build higher above. And, you know, this also speaks to, I know it's not, it may or may not leave, but the chemical plant, it speaks to some resiliency here, where we can rebuild something that could, you know, take a storm. How resilient is a chemical plant in the Category 3 storm surge? You know, what kind of problems can that cause? So that's all.
Good point, Commissioner Fernandez. Good point, Commissioner Fernandez. Commissioner Soria?
One thing I wanted to clarify, Ms. Melissa mentioned, like, even if we find it consistent and the land use category is changed, the chemical formulators can still stay and continue to do their chemical processing as it is today. Is that correct?
Yes, they could. The applicant may want to address that because I believe they have an intention to move.
Yeah, so southeastern development is the developer and the idea would be that they would transition this property and redevelop it and scrape chemical formulators and put up something brand new in that area.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Were there any more comments, questions, discussions of this item? Only once, going twice, all right? Then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions. Commissioner Bernstein?
I would move that we find TACPA 22-12 consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and I would cite in support of that objective LU 8.11. And I would further move that we pass that recommendation along to the Tampa City Council.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding signing land use policy 8.11 by Commissioner Bernstein. Commissioner Buzza?
Second.
All right, we have a second to that motion by Commissioner Buzza and a staff member coming to the mic.
Jennifer, Land Planning Commission Staff, I just want to be clear, it's LU Objective 8.11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
LU Objective 8.11, not policy. Thank you.
Yep.
So we have a consistency motion by Commissioner Bernstein, a second to that by Commissioner Buzza. Are there any more comments or corrections needing to be made? Not seeing any at this time, then I will ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardina?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Handy?
No.
Kress?
Yes.
Lauk? Commissioner Lauk?
He's not here.
Soria?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lauk, I didn't hear you.
No, he's not here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Soria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to one. Commissioner Handy voted no.
Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda for tonight is item 2C, TACPA 22-26 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, 808 North Armenia Avenue and 2402 West State Street. And the presenter is Danny Collins.
Good evening. This is Danny Collins with your Planning Commission staff. Today I'll be presenting TACPA 22-26 as a map amendment for the properties located at 808 North Armenia Avenue and 2402 West State Street. Just a quick background, this is a privately initiated amendment. It's small scale in size. Subject site's approximately .26 acres. The request is to change the future land use from the residential 20, future land use designation to the neighborhood mixed use 24, future land use designation. The subject site is located in the central Tampa Planning District. It's within the West Tampa Urban Village, and more specifically, it's in the Armory Gardens neighborhood. It is shown here on our locational map. Here's an aerial map of the subject site and surrounding properties. You'll see the subject site. It's shown in this yellow color. It's at the southwest corner of North Armenia Avenue and West State Street. The development pattern along North Armenia Avenue is predominantly a mix of non-residential and residential along the east portion of Armenia. And then you have some residential uses as you move west of Armenia Avenue. Villa Brothers Park is one block south of the subject site. Directly to the east of the subject site is the Foundry Apartments. This land southeast of the subject site is owned by the Florida Armory Board. And then to the north and west of the subject site are single-family detached uses. There are some office uses directly north of the subject site with frontage on Armenia Avenue. This is a view of the subject site from Armenia Avenue looking west. This is a view of the subject site from West State Street looking south. This is looking west on West State Street. The subject site is to the left. This is looking east on West State Street. The subject site is on our right. This is the Foundry Apartments directly to the east of the subject site with frontage on Armenia Avenue. This is a view of the subject site from Armenia Avenue looking west. This is a view of the subject site from West State Street looking south. This is looking west on West State Street. The subject site is to the left. This is looking east on West State Street. The subject site is on our right. This is the Foundry Apartments directly to the east of the subject site. This is looking north on North Armenia Avenue at the intersection of West State Street and North Armenia Avenue. And here is an example of some of the single-family residential uses that are found along West State Street. Here is the adopted future land use map. You'll see the subject site, including the parcels to the north, west, and south of the site, are recognized under the residential 20, future land use designation. This designation allows development up to 20 dwellings per acre. Directly to the east of the subject site is land recognized under the Community Commercial 35 designation. And then southeast of the subject site, east of Armenia Avenue, is land recognized under the CMU 35, future land use designation. Again, this is, this land to the south of the subject site is recognized under the Recreation Open Space Designation. Here is the proposed future land use of, the proposed future land use map showing the subject site under the Neighborhood Mixed Use 24 designation. This designation is limited to the city's forward growth areas with specifically, it can be considered within the urban villages. The Neighborhood Mixed Use 24 designation allows development up to 24 dwelling units per acre or up to a 1.0 FAR. Here is a slide showing the potential impacts of the proposed change. Currently under the residential 20 designation, the subject site can be considered for a maximum of five dwelling units or just over 5,600 square feet of non-residential uses. Any non-residential uses in the residential 20 designation would need to meet locational criteria. As proposed under the Neighborhood Mixed Use 24 designation, the subject site can be considered for six dwelling units or just over 11,300 square feet of residential or non-residential uses. The request would allow neighborhood serving commercial uses by right without requiring the site to meet locational criteria. Additionally, the request would introduce the consideration of commercial general uses on the subject site. The Planning Commission staff reviewed the request and found it consistent with several policies in the Comprehensive Plan. The request would promote a range of uses and a mixed-use development pattern in the city's urban village, specifically in the West Tampa Urban Village. The request would also promote compatible development and redevelopment to sustain stable neighborhoods and help ensure the social and economic health of the city. The request would also promote densities and a mixture of uses that support walking and transit near employment concentrations, residential services, and amenities. The request was also consistent with the housing policies and helping to ensure that inadequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs of Tampa's present and future populations. And finally, the request was consistent with infill policy 1.1.18, which seeks to direct the greatest share of growth to the city's urban villages. We sent this request off to our partner reviewing agencies and we did not receive any objections. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Is there an applicant? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ryan Manassi with Johnson Pope, 401 East Jackson Street. I'm here tonight representing the property owner for this Comprehensive Plan Amendment request. First off, thank you for having me and staff for their work on this plan amendment request. Again, we're here requesting an amendment from the existing residential 20 category to the proposed neighborhood mixed use 24 category for the property located at 808 North Armenia Avenue and 2402 West State Street. As Danny mentioned, the site is around .26 acres or 11,325 square feet, and it's currently zoned as a planned development for a place of religious assembly. As a companion to this plan amendment request, we have filed and are scheduled for a City of Tampa rezoning hearing for a new PD as a place of religious assembly and a daycare use. The plan amendment request before you would allow my client, through this PD, or through the PD that's running concurrently, to request an increase in floor area for the proposed synagogue with daycare. These residential support uses are compatible with the Comprehensive Plan and City of Tampa Land Development Code. This slide, this slide shows the subject area in our request, which is outlined in yellow. The blue shaded area signifies commercial and institutional uses, along with a large residential multifamily development immediately to the east of the subject site. And then, as Danny mentioned, you could see Villa Brothers Park to the south, Armory, this is the Foundry, I'm sorry, large multifamily project. The allowed density change is minimal and the allowable FAR would be increased to that 1.0 FAR. Again, the FAR is the main catalyst for this request before you tonight. My client wishes to expand their already approved PD and add a daycare use in order to accommodate their needs for the community and these residential support uses. This is the proposed future land use map from your staff report. I'd like to point out that approving this plan amendment would provide an appropriate transition from the existing Community Commercial 35 and residential 20 categories, which abut each other currently. Our request with the residential support uses further supports those, the transition to the RM16 zoning district, which is to the west. Also, Armenia Avenue is an arterial roadway and a transit emphasis corridor. The Comprehensive Plan identifies Armenia Avenue as a corridor suitable for redevelopment, which is in line with the request proposal before you. Now, on this slide, the blue shaded area signifies existing public, quasi-public, and institutional land uses. And then I further identify the stars, which you'll see in the upper-left side. That identifies other places of religious assembly, which is in line with the uses outlined in our rezoning that's running concurrent. You could see that this type of use is further rooted to the west, well into the residential neighborhood. Our request is adjacent to the arterial roadway, which supports this type of future land use request and is comparable and compatible with the existing development along North And this slide shows just the mix of zoning districts within the immediate area. The area outlined in yellow is the subject site. And what I'm trying to demonstrate here is there's uses that are allowed in the NMU 24 category that can and may already exist in the surrounding zoning districts. This request further supports the type of residential support uses that we're proposing. And just to identify for the screen, it's outlined in yellow. It's currently a PD. And you could see the CI uses that directly abut it, large PDs, RM16 to the west, and then the CG. With that, I'll have my client, Rabbi Mendy, here to briefly discuss his vision for the subject site, and then I'll come back up for the conclusion of my presentation. Rabbi?
My name is Mendy Dubrowski. I'm a rabbi and director of Chabad Lubavitchah South Tampa, the applicant. Just to give you a little background of our organization, we are a nonprofit that services the community at large. And though I'm a rabbi and I am Jewish, our organization operates community-wide and serves a wide range of people from all backgrounds, religious, nonreligious. And I think what's unique about our organization is that we are a very much a bottom-up organization. We service individuals. And in that capacity, we get to meet people and we always ask the question, how can we help them grow? And over the last few years, we have come to hear unique responses from that community through COVID, through some of the civil challenges that our city and our country has faced. And that's led us to this point here today, trying to make sure that this facility will be reflective of those changing needs that we're hearing within the community. In addition, I operate as a chaplain for both the Tampa Police Department, the FBI, Tampa General Hospital, St. Joseph's Hospital. So we have the mediums by which we can really get a pulse for what the community is looking for and how we can best serve them. And that is our goal ultimately, to build an institution that is viable, an institution that makes sense, not from our perspective, but based off of the feedback that we hear from these people that we service every single day. And we look forward to being able to do that, God willing, very soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rabbi. Again, for the record, Ryan Manassi. In conclusion, our professional review of the requested amendment, as shown in your, and as shown in your report by staff, demonstrates the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall policy direction of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Additionally, it provides for a development pattern that is comparable and compatible with the area, and the request meets numerous goals, objectives, and policies from your Comprehensive Plan. With that, we respectfully request your recommendation for approval or consistency, and I'm available for any questions. And also, I'll turn in the goals, objectives, and policies in this presentation for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we had anyone sign up for a public comment on this one online or in person. So I will turn it over to the planning commissioners for comments or questions, discussions of this item. Not seeing anyone rushing to it, then I will go on ahead and close public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Buzza?
I'd like to move that we find the TP, or excuse me, City of Tampa CPA 22-27 consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward on to the Tampa City Council?
22-26.
So sorry, 22-26, excuse me.
All right. And a second from you, Commissioner?
Yes, I'll second.
All right. We have a consistency finding from Commissioner Buzza and a second to that motion by Commissioner Bernstein. Are there any more comments, discussions from commissioners? Not seeing any, I will ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardina?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Lauk?
He's not here.
Soria?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lauk, I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you, sir. Soria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
All right. Thank you very much. No problem, thank you. Our next item up for business is 2D, TACPA 22-27 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, multiple folios generally located west of North Myrtle Street and north of East 97th Avenue. And the presenter is Emily Phelan.
Good evening, Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. This is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment 22-27, multiple folios generally located west of North Myrtle Street and north of East 97th Avenue. This was privately initiated, small scale. It's approximately 1.45 acres. And the request before you is to go from residential 10 to residential 35. It's located right here on the eastern side of the City of Tampa. It's in the University Planning District in the Terrace Park neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. It's outlined here in pink. The surrounding area has single-family detached with some multifamily uses further to the south, the southwest, and directly in front of the site as well. And the blue dotted line here is the city limits between the City of Tampa and the west and Temple Terrace on the east. This is facing north on East 97th Avenue, looking at the subject site. This is facing west on East 97th Avenue. The subject site is on the right, facing east, and the subject site is on the left. Facing north, the subject site is back here with the orange fence. This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site is outlined here in black and it is denoted with the residential 10 designation. As you can see, to the north, south, east, and west of the subject site is all residential 10. It's not a residential 10. It's 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 a residential 10. Further to the south and west is the residential 20 designation. And then further here, near Line Ball, is the residential 35 designation. This is the proposed future land use map, subject site denoted in the residential 35 designation. Under the existing residential 10 designation, it would be allowed to have 14 dwelling units or slightly over 22,000 square feet of nonresidential uses if it meets locational criteria. Under the residential 35 designation, the subject site would be allowed to have up to 50 dwelling units and slightly over 37,000 square feet of nonresidential uses, again, if locational criteria is met. Under the residential 35 designation, it would allow for the consideration of multifamily uses on the site. This was sent out for agency review, and the City of Tampa has an objection. Planning Commission Staff reviewed this and found it inconsistent with multiple comprehensive plan policies. It's inconsistent with promoting compatible development and redevelopment to sustain stable neighborhoods and ensure the social and economic health of the city, and also maintaining the character of single-family residential areas and protecting low-density, single-family areas. Planning Commission Staff recommends that it be found inconsistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And the applicant has a presentation.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation?
Good evening, Ms. Chairman and Board Members, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451 in St. Petersburg. Pleasure to be here this evening. This is TACPA 22-27. It is 1.45 acres, and we are currently a rez 10 and seeking rez 35. Located near Temple Terrace, your staff outlined the area quite well. And I've noted the site for you here. And you can see on first blush that there's quite a bit of intensity in the area, R35, R20, CMU 35 throughout the median area. The Planning Commission, and you heard some from your staff, notes the request may introduce additional density and intensity within this established detached, single-family residential neighborhood. Staff also says that the adjacent parcel to the south of the subject is presently utilized for single-family semi-detached uses. It does recognize some to the south, but that's it. So what we would present to you is that this area is actually very involved and is made up of a lot of multifamily, that the view of the staff as being primarily single-family, we find, is not how we see the character or how the character of the area is. So looking at a mapping, you can, I've noted the site here, it's an L shape. And what I'm going to do is take you around the block, we're just going to look around the block of this particular site. As staff has noted, to the south, abutting is multifamily. These are multifamily uses. This is in downtown Tampa, downtown St. Petersburg. This is a middle socioeconomic area. We go further down the street on the same block, again, multifamily, virtually the next block, next set, next set of lots. You can see that we have multifamily in quite a number of structures and buildings there. And these are some of the others. Continue around the block for the next many or few parcels. Again, you can see by the mailbox in front that is, that there is a development of multifamily, single-story, but multifamily in a number of buildings coming across the property there. And you can see from the gas meters that there's multiple residences there as well, and next door in that structure as well. Again, further up the street on the same block, you can see again from the mailbox, multiple uses and multifamily. And again, moving up towards the top of the street is a apartment complex, which the larger buildings are across the street. And then, just across the street on Myrtle, you'll see as well that there's multifamily. You can see by the mailboxes, the multifamily as well. And you can see some, some more multifamily two-story there. And as staff pointed out to you, there is some significant multifamily, the next block or two, as you can see from the aerial here. The site is located on one side, you'll see where I've noted the site and the multifamily. So again, the Planning Commission notes that this is an established, single-family residential community, which we're clearly showing it's not. It's very involved with multifamily. And, you know, there's single-family, sure, there's certainly a single-family on the block, but there's a lot of multifamily. So we don't see that as an incompatible use as proposed. But I think what's more important is looking at your chapter in the comprehensive plan, which you did not hear from the staff about, in the housing section. There's some goals and policies that I think are absolutely critical, particularly to this particular application, which notes to support a range of housing options to affordably meet the needs of current and future residents. We read every day in the paper how, whether it's workforce, or whether it's affordable, or whether it's lower-cost housing, it's a very short supply. This would be a great place for lower-income housing. We're not saying affordable, but we're saying housing that meets the needs of everyday residents in this, in this, in our community. And the median household in this area is $35,709. Another policy under your housing chapter is 1.1.8. And I think this is very important, it reads that to encourage a variety of housing types, including single-family, multifamily, missing-middle housing, to diversify the housing stock and provide Hillsborough County residents with more housing options across a range of income levels. Those two policies, we feel, direct this type of use specifically on this property. And 1.1.7, again, from your housing chapter, preserve and grow stock of naturally occurring affordable housing by supporting development patterns, including but not limited to residential infill, which we believe this is residential infill, I think your staff thinks differently about that, small lot development and accessory dwelling units. And support rental housing opportunities, encouraging permanently affordable rental units. Again, I don't want to misdirect or mischaracterize, we're not proposing these as true affordable, but housing for folks in this community where we know what the median income is lower. And then, under the University Area Community Plan, which we fall under, that same type of direction follows, noting providing greater flexibility in land use and density for future development while ensuring neighborhood buffers and urban amenities are enhanced. So in regard to the policies that we see in the comprehensive plan, that we feel do strongly direct a good or different density in this area, it certainly meets the multifamily in the area and provides a housing stock that would directly affect or directly support this community. So with that, we appreciate your attention and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. We got a couple people sign up in the public comment for this item. So we will hear from those individuals. Let me just check online here, public hearing, but they don't want to speak. All right. So we will start off with Stephen Walters.
Good evening, Commissioners, Stephen Walters, for the record. I have lived in this area for 40... Stephen Walters? Oh, 5117 East 97th Avenue, and also 5106 East 97th Avenue. I am two, I have two properties that I own on that street. I was raised in that area. I've been there for 45 years. A, I don't appreciate being called a low-income area there, okay? Yes, we do have low-income housing there, we have Section 8 housing in there. We've had that there since 1980, when my grandfather owned that property, which is now my property. My biggest concern about the increase going up to 35 or 50 homes that they want to put there is going to be definitely the traffic on that street. That street is, that street was built in 19, in the 1950s, 1960s. It's never been improved, it's never been widened, it's never been really fixed. And now we're getting ready to add another 35 to 50 automobiles on that and families. My next concern about it is, on 97th Avenue, we have two corners that are 90-degree corners. There are no stop signs, there's no, I take that back, there are four speed limit signs that say 10 miles an hour, and I guarantee you, one out of maybe every 50 might obey that sign. We have a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign that was just posted there late last year. I stopped when the lady was putting it there, and I told her there's no point in putting it there because nobody's going to obey it. She laughed and just said, hey, that's my job. Two weeks ago, we had the sewer systems cleaning out our street. They were on the east side of 97th Avenue when they told me themselves that they've almost got rained over twice by people speeding around that corner so fast. The west side of 97th Avenue, you have another 90-degree turn right there, where they're wanting to put a parking lot for their apartments, condos, whatever they decide to build there, is coming right out, right there. So when that car comes around that corner and it hits the person coming out, we have garbage trucks, we have school buses, we have semis come down this little residential street, but yet, we're going to put 50 more families in that little neighborhood there. My next biggest issue is the water pressure. We barely have water pressure as it is right now on 97th Avenue, but yet, we're going to put another 50 units in there. My next thing is drainage. When it rains, the top of 97th Avenue, which is on the east side, flows down to the west side, where these apartments or whatever is going to be built. I understand I'm out of time, but I just, I really hope that the traffic thing is my biggest thing. So I really hope you all take consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. All right. Next up, we have Clayton Chapman.
If I could, I'd like to pass around some pictures. I'd like to, my name is Clayton Chapman. My address is 5011 East 97th Avenue. And I'm here to speak about the safety concerns. Like Mr. Walters, I've lived in that area my entire life. I, the residence that my parents had when I was born and raised is still in the family, and I own that now. The photos that I passed around, I apologize for not having a slideshow or whatever the case may be, but I just wanted to give you some examples of this. 97th Avenue is .1 mile long, okay? So we're not talking about an extremely large stretch of road. Pictures one through three show 97th Avenue looking from the west towards 50th Street. And the proposed development will be on the right-hand side where you see the orange fence. Pictures four through eight show the corner of 50th Street and 97th. And if you look at that, fortunately, not unusual, but as I was taking picture, there's multiple cars coming in that area. And as you can see, it's a very tight turn there. If you look at the second to the last picture, the proposed development site is going to be on the left-hand side, as Mr. Walters mentioned, very close to that corner, within 20 yards. You're asking people, up to 50 new residents coming out of that area and making that curve potentially. We have asked in the past to have not, or 50th Street extended to drive through to the following, I'm sorry, to the road to the north so we could relieve some of that traffic on 97th Avenue, but we were denied that request. The fence on the right, on the last photo that I have here, on the right-hand side, is continuously hit. That fence has been there for, for greater than 25 years and has just been run over, run through, damaged continuously because of the traffic and trying to come around those corners. I don't believe that we need to impede progress and development, but I do think that we have to be wise about it and safe. And I do not believe that this street can handle the additional traffic being proposed. And they mentioned that R20 and R35, there are some R20 relative and close to this area, but the R35 is not. It, no R35 is located on 97th Avenue. So with that, I conclude my comments. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. All right. Now I have Mr. Shernoda. Do you want to comment on this one? No. All right, I think that's all we had sign up for this one, I believe, unless anyone's going to get angry at me. Did you have something to say, Emily?
Yes, staff needs to make a correction on the record. Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. Mr. Pressman referenced policies of the housing section that were on, for not the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan, but the unincorporated Hillsborough County Plan. And also, reference to the University Area Community Plan is also in the unincorporated Hillsborough County.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Pressman, back to you, sir, for a response to this public comment.
Well, you obviously made an error there, so I apologize for that. But the point is that a range of housing is required and needed for all communities and all residents of the City of Tampa. And we can't ignore that in median income areas that we are not going to provide a range of housing for citizens in this particular community. I would like to put up on the overhead real quickly, if I may. It comes out good enough that there is an entire web, and although we're not here to speak about traffic and transportation, there is a spider web of access points to the north, to the south, to the east, and the west to this property, including Bush Boulevard and 50, or 56th and other major arterials. So again, as the board members are well aware, while I have the greatest respect for any residents who come down to speak and have concerns about their neighborhood, I'm not aware of any, haven't been made aware of any transportation or traffic issues, but access points and transportation will be well accommodated for, with, really, with not a lot of units, which would potentially at maximum be 55, but as we all know, the future land use category may say 55, but by the time we put in parking and retention and possible wetlands area, the number is much diminished. Those plans have not been specifically brought forward yet. So with that, I apologize for the error, and I appreciate staff clarifying that, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pressman. All right, to our planning commissioners for comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Cardenas?
I'd say I'm familiar with this area, I've looked at a lot of projects in there and stuff. And it is kind of a weird mishmash area in the context of there's a lot of properties that are large, and they're, you know, sometimes there, there's huge properties and it's in the middle of a big area, so on the outskirts, it's all other smaller residences, and it's kind of like locked in there. And there are a lot of smaller duplexes and triplexes and stuff kind of scattered throughout. I do think the R35 is a real push. I think that's way too big. Maybe an R20 would make sense or something like that, but R35 is just way too large.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardenas. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Handy?
I concur. I don't know this neighborhood that well, but I sympathize with the community comments. And, and I agree with the applicant that, yes, we do need to find places to put a variety of housing opportunities, but it doesn't look like this is the right spot. And I just have to say that, yeah, in theory, the traffic and the roads are all going to be accommodated, but who sees that? I mean, when these higher-density developments go in, it's the residents that suffer. And the roads, if we're lucky, it follows, and usually they don't. So I think that even though we're not looking at roadway improvement, improvements specifically, I think it's all part of the big picture, and we need to think about that and what the residents will end up with. Thank you.
Very good points, Commissioner Handy. All right, Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Commissioner Handy said it very well. Listening to the discussion, it dawned on me that, you know, we, we've often referred to consistency with the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood as a, as a key objective. And it's no more a litmus test, I suppose, than coastal high hazard or any number of things we've talked about. But it's supported by sound policy considerations, and I think they emerged in some of the comments we heard from the neighbors, neighbors who didn't speak so much to that as more immediate concerns such as traffic. But there's a reason why we strive to maintain consistency with the surrounding neighborhood characteristics, and it's interwoven with all the things we heard today. There's a reason why when we stray from that, we do it at our peril, because it opens up traffic and other challenges. To me, this is exactly that kind of example. And I think the, the map that Ms. Phelan presented at the outset of her presentation was very compelling. If you go out far enough in any concentric circle, you're bound to find more intense uses. But within this neighborhood, it seems like our 10 is generally the standard.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernstein. Commissioner Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this, this one's a tough one for me. I know the area very well, too. You know, we do need housing, there's no live oaks we have to contend with on this property. There is a ton of multifamily in the area, and I do hear you, 97th Street really needs some attention, that, you know, it's, it's been overlooked by the city, and it would be fantastic if they connected. would be fantastic if they connected Fiftieth, which might bring more traffic, too, though, because that'll get you through that part of town a little easier. So I don't know, I'm on the fence, so maybe I agree, maybe R-35 is a little bit too much, but I don't know, it's a tough one for me. I feel like it needs to be redeveloped.
Thank you, Commissioner Fernandez. Commissioner Soria.
Yes, I would agree with every commissioner that mentioned about, and I do meal deliveries in that area for meals on wheels, and that road, Ninety-seventh Avenue, I've been there a couple of times, and if there's another car on that street, it is challenging to pass by. So traffic is definitely one of the concerns, and adding high-density housing might make it even more challenging for most of the residents in that area, so that is one of those things I would like to add as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Soria. Commissioner Bowden.
Yes, I agree with the other commissioners as well, and one of the things that I, and reading the, the description, should these apartments be built, it's going to change the character of the community, because I think they're talking about an eight-story building, so you're bringing in additional changes in the character of the community as well as additional traffic, and with that, you are also going to bring in additional, not only traffic, but there will probably be some additional commercial that's probably going to follow that as well. So, you know, like I said, I agree with the other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Any more? Yes, Commissioner Kress?
I'll just add that I'm glad it's not in the coastal high hazard area. And I agree with Commissioner Fernandez. It's kind of a tough one, because we do need more housing, that kind of missing middle. I'm not usually very sympathetic to traffic concerns. More housing doesn't always have to mean more cars, but I do think this is probably a little bit out of context from what I've seen in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress. Any more? Commissioner Fernandez?
If it is eight stories, I'm going to lean more on denying, because then they're going to be looking right into a bunch of backyards in the neighborhood.
Good point, Commissioner Fernandez. Are there any more comments or discussions, opinions from the commissioners? Not seeing any lights at this time, then I'll go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time I have moved that we find TACPA twenty-two dash twenty-seven inconsistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and that we pass that recommendation along to the Tampa City Council for their consideration.
All right, Commissioner Buzza.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, seconded by Commissioner Buzza. Any more comments or discussion items from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this time, then I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Kress?
Yes.
Soria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, our next item up is two E, TACPA twenty-two dash twenty-eight Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Tampa Union Wharf, and the presenter is Sam Thomas.
Sam Thomas with your planning commission staff. This is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment twenty-two twenty-eight, Tampa Union Wharf, and multiple addresses in the vicinity of the Ebor Channel. Some background on this request, it was privately initiated, it's small scale and size, and it's approximately fifteen point three-one acres, and the request is to go from heavy industrial, light industrial, general mixed-use and general mixed-use twenty-four to urban mixed-use sixty and community mixed-use thirty-five. Here is a site on our aerial locator map. It is within the central Tampa Planning District. Portions of the site are within the historic Ebor neighborhood and within the local Ebor Historic District, and the site is within the coastal high hazard. Here's an aerial overview of the subject site. It is highlighted and outlined in yellow. The site can be divided between north and south of the Solomon Expressway. This red dash line right here is the approximate location of the Ebor City Local Historic District, so you can see those parcels to the north are within the district. The surrounding area and the site itself is industrial in character. As you move away from the site, it gets less industrial, and there is some multifamily mixed in with it. Right here is multifamily north of Solomon Expressway, and then you can see some additional, I think it might be cut off, but you can see some single-family uses here, and then spread out over here. To your south and east this way is the Palmetto Beach neighborhood. You can see the parking lot for IKEA over here, is directly adjacent to the Ebor Channel and the port, and then farther west, you get into the Channel District, and then this area to the north up here, I would like to note, is part of the Gas Works redevelopment This is looking south on Nineteenth Street. The subject site is on your right here. This is looking west down Penny Street. The subject site is on your right. This is looking northeast. The subject site is on both sides of Penny Street, on here and then down here. This is looking north along Penny Street directly at the subject site. This is looking north on Hell Olivia Signor Street. The subject site is on the left right here. And this is looking west on East Second Street. The subject site is on both sides of the street. This is looking east on East Third Avenue, and the subject site is on your right side. And this is looking south onward Nineteenth Street. The subject site encompasses both sides of the street. And here is your adopted future land use map. You can see the southern portion of the site is recognized under the heavy industrial future land use designation. Once you move north of Solomon Expressway, those first parcels that you come to are organized under the light industrial future land use, and then north of that, and this lighter gray purple color is a general mixed-use twenty-four designation. You can see a little bit of that mixed in north of the site as well. This darker color, this darker purple, darker than the general mixed-use twenty-four color, is urban mixed-use sixty, and you can see that here and here next to the site, and then additionally along Third Avenue. This darker magenta color is the RMU one hundred. That's the, that says future land use category outside of the CBD Business District. And then this lighter pinker color over here is the community mixed-use thirty-five designation. And here is a site with the proposed future land use designations. You can see the site south of the Solomon Expressway is recognized under the UMU sixty, the light industrial under the UMU sixty, and then the general mixed-use twenty-four to the community mixed-use thirty-five. The potential impacts of this request, under the existing future land use designations, the site can be considered for a hundred units or one, around one-point-two million square feet of, or residential or non-residential space. And then with the potential requests, you could be considered for seven-hundred-and-sixty-six units or one-point-eight million square feet of residential or non-residential uses. And the request would introduce the consideration of multifamily uses on the sites that are currently designated light and heavy industrial, and it would remove the potential for industrial uses on the site. We did reach out to the different agencies, and we did receive an objection from the City of Tampa staff regarding this one. Planning Commission staff found multiple policies and objectives applicable with this request, such as promoting a range of uses in close proximity to each other and encouraging compact higher-density development compatible with the character, ensuring inadequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs of Tampa's present and future populations, encouraging additional density intensity within areas served by transit, and promoting high-density housing within proximity to the central business district as part of the Compact City Form strategy. However, Planning Commission staff found the request inconsistent with multiple objectives and policies regarding the coastal high hazard and the preservation of industrial policies, such as directing populations away from the coastal high hazard area, and that plan amendments that increase densities within the coastal planning area shall demonstrate no negative impacts on hurricane evacuation times. And then for the industrial preservation of lands discourages residential development near other industrial uses, and prioritizing heavy industrial uses on undeveloped property that is currently designated heavy industrial. So based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals and objectives of Tampa's Comprehensive Plan. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Was this private or public?
This was private.
Okay. Does the applicant have a presentation? Yeah, please come forward.
My name is Tyler Hudson. My address is four hundred North Ashley Drive. It's an honor to be here this evening on behalf of Daryl Shaw, who's the contract purchaser for these properties. I know we're a few days removed from Groundhog Day, but I will confess there is going to be a bit of repetition in this presentation compared to what you have heard earlier with the Rattlesnake Point project. I think Sam did a great job setting the table as far as where we are, but we're asking for these changes for two slightly different reasons, for the north of Adamo parcels versus the south of Adamo parcels. So I'm going to cover group two, which is the south of Adamo, but I'd like for Alex Shaler from my firm to go ahead and cover the group one, north of Adamo. Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alex Shaler, four hundred North Ashley Drive, for the record. Sam did a great job of setting up the exact request. Just to summarize, the parcels that are located along Adamo Drive were proposing to change from light industrial to UMU sixty, which is consistent with what is to the west of the site today. And then the parcels just north, one block off of Adamo, were proposing from GMU twenty-four to CMU thirty-five, and this is, again, consistent with what is seen in the area. As you can see, there's prevalent CMU thirty-five just north of those subject parcels as well as CC thirty-five, so two commercial mixed-use land use categories prevalent in Ebor City right there. There's a host of surrounding precedent parcels here for this request, and as you can see, the green-hatched parcels shown on the screen, which is inherently almost the entire, that pocket of Ebor City there along Adamo, those have undergone comprehensive plan amendments already in the past. So you can see our subject parcels are the ones that are shaded in the gray dots outlined in the dashed yellow lines. That is part of this application tonight, and as you can see, those are some of the last remaining parcels in this pocket of Ebor City left to be amended from the industrial land use categories and this GMU twenty-four category, which I'll touch on in a second, to those mixed-use more prevalent categories in the comprehensive plan, like CMU thirty-five, UMU sixty, and RMU one hundred. And there's a couple of different justification points we wanted to make for this request. The first one being that this is located along a transit emphasis corridor. Adamo Drive is both an arterial and a transit emphasis corridor. There's a host of policies in the comprehensive plan that promote both intensification, densification of properties located along transit emphasis corridors, and I've cited both of those here, just a couple of the references from the plan. And the second point we wanted to make was a brief discussion on the nature of the GMU twenty-four future land use category. The land use category matrix in the comprehensive plan is very clear in stating that the parcels that are currently designated as GMU twenty-four are denoted as areas with no clear identifiable development intent, as well as it also highlights the fact that these parcels are intended to transition over time into land use categories that are more consistent and prevalent in the neighborhood. So our parcels here, the group one, the north of Adamo Drive parcels, are shaded in red, and then this land, as Sam denoted earlier, just west of the subject site, is all part of the Gas Works PDA redevelopment, and this was approved for five point, about five-point-one million square feet of development, and this is including mixed-use developments. This is hotel, this is commercial, office, retail, with land use equivalency matrix allowing trade-offs. So we wanted to make the point here that GMU twenty-four is really no longer a consistent category for this area, because there is a clear identifiable development intent and trend, and that is towards higher density, more mixed-use development in that pocket of Ebor City. And with that, I will pass it back to Tyler Hudson to run through group two.
Thanks, Alex. So let's take the projects, the pieces that are south of Adamo. It's important to note, too, that pretty much everything that you see on screen that's in that crosshatched area, that's the subject of tonight's amendment. Going westward across the channel is the subject of a pending rezoning application in the City of Tampa for a PDA for a project called Ebor Harbor. Tampa Union Wharf was the prior name, but when we talk about, you know, promoting mixed-use and stuff like that, this, this isn't speculative. This is actually a filed companion rezoning application. So this is a story about how there can be enthusiasm about for development, and then external forces can put that to a stop. In two thousand six and two thousand seven, this assemblage, as you can see in the As and the Bs areas, was changed from heavy industrial to RMU one hundred and to UMU sixty. The development went to Tampa City Council. It was approved. It directed most of the development actually on the A, the A parcels, but the B parcels were part of the approval. As you can imagine with the timing here, two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the project actually did not end up happening. So this is sort of the latest resurgence of effort on this. The parcels that are the subject to the amendment today outlined in yellow were not part of that original group, because they weren't under control. And so what we're trying to do here is fill out the rest of this area, which would be bordered by Nineteenth Street on the east and Solomon Drive on the south. And I would respectfully submit to you that if we were, if we proposed going further east or further south, this room would not be quite so empty. In terms of justification, I just kind of alluded to that, you already have UMU sixty to the west, so people are allowed to live on the west on the purple part, they're not allowed to live in the gray part. We don't, respectfully, don't think that makes a whole lot of sense. This is one of, this is an emerging dense cluster of the city. You are near Adamo Drive, you are near the Gas Works development, which could bring, I mean, up to five thousand dwelling units. There's a pretty pervasive development pattern of mixed, of, really, I'd say multifamily, not quite mixed use, along Adamo Drive easterly as you go towards Copper Tail, and you're just a stone's throw from the Channel District, which is one of the more dense parts from a multifamily perspective of the city. And I think it's worth noting that we're not proposing any, any new changes in terms of land use categories that are not in the area at all. This is a pretty common, common mixed-use category for this, this part. Yeah, as I alluded to, I think that Nineteenth Street probably makes sense as like, as an eastern boundary. I think there are some very valid industrial retention policies in the comprehensive plan, but there are, there's a pretty significant amount of industrial land holding that will be remaining in the city if this were to be approved. I think I covered this already. Okay, I want to be really respectful of this commission's time, because we've talked a little bit about the coastal high hazard area already. This really brings to bear the same considerations you discussed on the Rattlesnake Point project. I will say that while Rattlesnake Point has some hyper-specific policies related to Rattlesnake Point, there are some likewise pretty similar, not quite as specific policies that talk about mixed-use corridors, major corridors, transit emphasis corridors, all of which these assemblages are located on. So given that, you know, we need to put something on the record, I'd like to go through these quickly. I thought, candidly, as a practitioner who has had, I think, approved by this commission about four different mixed-use projects that were in the coastal high hazard area, this new one, and I think this commission saw for each of those cases that there were countervailing policies in the comprehensive plan that support that policy direction. I thought it was really a fruitful discussion. I think this is, this is a tough policy to reconcile with other things in the comprehensive plan, and so that was valuable to, to listen to. I think I'm going to walk through the policies that I think, at least use a really nice, the scales of justice, and while I don't think really justice is quite implicated in this decision, I do think balancing is, and I do think that the policies that I'm going to go through here do outweigh the concerns about eight-point-one-point-one. One thing I want to allude to quickly going back, it's really not possible to comply, I think, with this policy one-point-T five about a provisioning of, you know, showing that there's going to be no negative impacts. That's really what the zoning is for, and I think there's going to be opportunities through rewrites of the comprehensive plan to really put the burden on the zoning to show some of that, because with the planning, with this, what you have before you, you have two choices. You can find this application consistent or inconsistent. We really have no ability to sort of, you know, tack on additional showings. Infill development, we talk about encouraging infill development on the utilized sites. This is an underutilized site. International Ship is not going to be operating at this location probably five years from now, and it's worth noting, it's not in the four corners of this application. We do have a very long closing period, because it is Daryl's intent to make sure that International Ship has every avenue possible to relocate its workforce, which is a critical, the maritime industry is a critical part of the city's economy. They own land elsewhere within the city. I just want to keep that in mind. We're not moving folks off the site right away. The Compact City Form, it's a little vague side. I mean, it does talk about trying, you know, trying to have a level of compactness, promote walking, promote transit. Predominant occupancy comes to mind, because you want to encourage residential development where it sort of is already. The Channel District certainly provides that. The Gas Works project is going to provide that. Gas Works is already under construction, and it's going to potentially be accelerated a little bit quicker than we originally thought. These are the two policies that I think are the most instructive, or sorry, one is an objective, one's a policy, six-point-one and six-point-one-three. It talks about transforming major corridors to have a mix of uses and provide opportunities for medium and high-density housing. That is precisely what this applicant, application proposes. And second, the policy that seeks to implement that with residential conversion, again, talks about mixed-use corridors, not major corridors, but mixed-use corridors between major intersections. That's what this is. We're between Channel Side Drive and Twenty-Second Street. It's residential or mixed use, residential uses to ensure the development is compatible with surrounding land uses. What we're trying to do is create the compatibility, because candidly, there's a lack of compatibility. having heavy industrial right next to this UMU 60. I think by adopting this amendment, council, with hopefully your recommendation, we'll be able to sort of square that off using 19th Street as a fairly natural boundary and then Solomon Drive to the south. And again, there is an objective in the city comprehensive plan about ensuring an adequate supply of housing. We don't have an adequate supply of housing. 150 people move to the region every day. A fair number of them are finding Tampa a place they want to live. But we have an affordability crisis that has many causes, and there's certainly more than one solution to that. But we do have a structural imbalance between demand and supply for housing in Tampa, particularly the type of housing that is in the type of 15-minute neighborhood where you are not entirely dependent on an automobile. That is precisely what the Ebor Harbor project is going to do. And I think that there will be more details on that as it gets to the zoning. But we need this, we need this to get passed by the Tampa City Council in order to bring that vision to life. And again, Gas Works isn't on here, but you all know, because I brought a lot of amendments for Gas Works before you, that's located between Encore, the Channel District, and Historic Ebor. The Ebor Harbor project is there, shown in yellow, and it's going to create a really nice southeasterly, easterly, I wouldn't say endpoint, but enclosure to what is really going to be, I think, the most vibrant part of the city in the decades to come. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and thanks for your patience on the coastal high hazard area.
All right. Thank you. We did not have anyone sign up for a comment on this one, so I will turn it over to the commissioners for questions, discussions of this item. Not seeing, Commissioner Bernstein?
This might be a question better directed at staff at the outset. There is, in the initial presentation, I don't want to put words in the mouth of staff, but my sense is that the overarching concern with this proposal centers around two separate concepts. One is the coastal high hazard, but in fairness, also some discussion that centered around what I took down as HSG Policy 1.3.2, which is to limit residential development in areas designated as industrial use. I want to make sure I'm understanding the staff's position clearly on that piece of it because we have before us a recommendation of inconsistency from staff. And I think by now, most everyone on the commission is capable of assigning whatever weight to coastal hazard they themselves think is appropriate, but we don't often see Policy 1.3.2. Is, could we get a little elaboration on that? And is there any other policy perhaps that I'm overlooking that's supporting the staff's position?
Good evening. Sam Thomas with your planning, Commissioner Staff. That is correct. The overriding inconsistency was based on the coastal high hazard, as well as the preservation of industrial lands, mainly the, not mainly, but between the light industrial and the heavy industrial down there, and then within proximity to the port, is what those were based on when it came to finding that inconsistency, especially with gasoline terminals just south of that and the heavy industrial. Does that provide enough clarification?
If that's helpful, please elaborate.
Well, just to build on what Sam said, in his staff report, we also cited, there's a section of Objective 8.9 and 8.10 in the land use section that speaks to the need for industrial lands as part of our employment and economic opportunity. And specifically, Objective 8.10 talks about preserving the light and heavy industrial areas that are appropriately located in terms of traffic accessibility, minimizing their environmental effects in the surrounding areas, and ensuring compatibility with surrounding land uses. And, you know, given this is right there by the port and the port connector roadway and all of that, it, I think, speaks directly to that objective, that there needs to be some consideration for the preservation of those industrial lands. Once they're gone, we're not going to get them back for employment uses, probably.
So that helps me a little bit. There's a thought that, to your point, you can't recapture industrial land once it's reassigned. And I suppose that's not completely true, right? We could always be confronting a proposal to revert it back. But, you know, I just have concerns, I guess, with that argument for a simple reason. This area, from my vantage point, seems to be in transition. Where it lands, I don't think any of us really know yet. But the notion that we would utilize our authority to try to, you know, hold back the water, so to speak, from spilling over the dam when, you know, there's an effort to convert it into residential and mixed-use purpose, you know, it seems to fly in the face of some other policies that have come up, including, you know, LU Objective 6.1 and Policy 6.1.3, and even HSG objectives that compete with the ones, ones like 1.3.2. And ironically, coming off the other application that we just wrapped up, taken to its logical extreme, that also threatens to undermine our ability to continue finding affordable housing for residents at a time when population is certainly not getting smaller. So that helps me understand it. I'm not trying to get on a soapbox and preach my position one way or another, probably sounds like I am. But I do want to make sure I understand the staff's position because you all put a lot of time, obviously, into this, and I appreciate it. So that helps me personally. Thanks.
You mentioning transition did remind me of something that may help give a little more context to this and help with the northern section. The northern section of the plan amendment request was identified in the Ebor City Vision 2020 Master Plan Update as an area that is transitioning, but it was not included in the study.
I appreciate that, Mr. Thomas. All context, I think, is helpful to the folks up here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Fernandez?
I just want to make the point, we do need our industrial land, but they sold it to a real estate developer. I think we all know what, you know, what's going to happen to it, right? I mean, we want to keep that industrial land, but it's not our say. And so, you know, I've said it a million times, vertically building in Tampa is a good idea for us, and I won't be shocked if we see Palmetto Beach accessible from neighborhood to neighborhood in a couple of decades from now.
Thank you, Commissioner Fernandez. Are there any more questions? Yes, Commissioner Cardenas?
I feel the same way. I think we should just go to a vote.
Well, then. See?
Spend 20 more minutes.
All right. Are there any more comments or questions or demands from the commissioners? Commissioner Kress?
I have a demand. Could we hear from the city of Tampa?
Stephen Benson, city of Tampa. Thank you. I did just want to provide some context to our objection. I believe you all are probably tired of hearing our objection to the coastal management policy at this point. But with this specific application, staff had a very difficult time trying to reconcile all of the policies that were involved, as well as the city's own strategic goals for growth and development in the central Planning District. What I can say is that, and what we didn't include necessarily in detail in our staff report, is that we were asked by the Ebor City CRA to work in partnership with them to study the area along Adamo Drive and propose some map amendments as a result of the Ebor Vision 2020 Plan, specifically to look at changes that would modify the land use categories and look to introduce residential where it makes sense. We don't have a map ready to share with you at this point. We haven't even begun that process yet, but I just wanted to provide that promise to you that we will be back and that we don't necessarily believe that should stand in the way of any proposals that appear on the interim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Commissioner Handy?
I listened to this with interest because I keep thinking that just because there's all these other developments that are being converted to residential doesn't mean we need one more. And much of that is because of the coastal high hazard area, but some of it is also because of, and I fully support infill, and I wish I could live there and walk to Copper Tail. It's a great location, but for the coastal high hazard area, and, but for it loses its value if there is no employment and no industry and no jobs. And I love Commissioner Cardenas' comment about, you know, these people want to live on the water, let them. The problem there is that the rest of us suffer from the evacuation times and the damage and the rising insurance costs and everything else that comes with putting too many people where they probably shouldn't be. So, you know, I understand the compatible uses and everything like that. And again, like I said, I think it's a terrific place for infill development, but we don't need more people in areas where it's going to be more evacuation, more hurricane, more flood, more sea level rise. So I agree with the staff's findings of inconsistency, and I would support that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Handy. All right, Commissioner Bowden.
Yes, I agree, but Commissioner Handy in regards to the employment piece, because once the industrial is gone, and you said 15 minutes walk, walk to where to work? That's the question. If there's no industrial area to work, where do you walk to work? So that's the issue that I have. Once it becomes residential, there is no work for the people that is walkable. So that means that someone has to have some mode of transportation to get to work.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Commissioner Kress?
I could just respond to that. This is adjacent to the streetcar, and I would argue that the central business district is a pretty easy walk from there. And I believe the highest use in Ebor City is actually office, which is, I think, quite surprising to a lot of people. So the jobs might be different, for sure, but I think that it is a walkable commute.
Commissioner Cardenas?
Yeah, I would just want to comment, just in business myself and real estate, I mean, a good majority of the people that we have coming here, living here, moving here, are working remote. Their jobs are not your traditional industrial type of jobs where they clocking in at 6:30 and out by 3:30. That time is changing slowly and surely. And if anything, you know, more of those industrial-type jobs, I think, are, they're just changing. It's not as much. You've got technology involved. So, you know, we've got to continue to change with that and, you know, provide the direction of where things are naturally occurring.
Thank you. Good comments. Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this point. Then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to propose that we, for CP 2288, from general mixed-use 24 light industrial to community mixed-use 35 and urban mixed-use 60, consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and forward this recommendation to the Tampa City Council.
Could we have some policies or from staff?
Sure. Land use policy 2.1.1.
2.1.1. You kind of turned your head. Is that okay?
That's fine if that's all you want to cite.
All right. We have a consistency motion from Commissioner Fernandez signing policy 2.1.1. And Commissioner Buzza?
I'll second.
All right. And a second to that consistency filing by Commissioner Buzza. Are there any questions or clarifications needed, comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any. I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on that item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
No.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Handy?
No.
Kress?
Yes.
Saria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-2. Commissioner Bowden and Handy voted no.
Thank you. All right. Onto our next item of business, item number 2F, TACPA 22-29 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment 111 North Tampania Avenue and 2412 North A Street. And the presenter is Gillian Massey.
Good evening. This is Gillian Massey with your planning commission staff, and I'll be presenting on CPA 22-29, 111 North Tampania Avenue and 2412 North A Street. Some background on this amendment is that it's privately initiated, a small-scale amendment, approximately located on .40 acres. And the proposal before you is to change the future land use designation from residential 20 to community mixed-use 35. This is a general location map of the plan amendment. It's located in the central Tampa Planning District, specifically in the Armory Gardens This is an aerial photo of the site that is outlined here in blue. It's located north of West Kennedy Boulevard on the southeast corner of North Tampania and West North A Street. The site is currently developed with a parking lot that's associated with the light commercial use to the south. There are a mixture of uses in the area, including single-family attached residential, two-family residential, and light commercial along West Kennedy Boulevard. This is a view of the site from North A Street facing south. This is a view of West North A Street facing east. This is a view of the subject site from North Tampania Avenue facing northeast. This is North Tampania Avenue facing south towards West Kennedy Boulevard. And this is the intersection of North Tampania Avenue and West Kennedy Boulevard. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site, which is outlined in black. Currently, the site is designated as residential 20. Surrounding the site is residential 20 to the north and east. Community mixed-use 35 is located further east, just over a half a block away. Urban mixed-use 60 is located along West Kennedy Boulevard. And residential 20 is located to the west, and residential 10 is located further west. This is the proposed future land use map for the subject site, and the proposal is to change the site from residential 20 to community mixed-use 35. This slide outlines the potential impacts of changing the land use designation on the site from residential 20 to community mixed-use 35. The request will result in a higher residential density and greater commercial intensity. Currently, the maximum potential density is eight dwelling units per acre, and the maximum commercial intensity is 8,712 square feet, subject to locational criteria. A change to the community mixed-use 35 would allow a potential 14 dwelling units per acre and commercial intensity of approximately 35,000 square feet. It will also have the potential to introduce commercial general uses on the subject site. And also, please note that FAR, floor area ratio, can be applied to residential projects that are compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, a maximum potential residential density could equate to more than 14 dwelling units per acre. Our planning commission staff has reviewed the amendment and found that the request supports many of the policies in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan as it relates to housing the city's population, the city planning strategy, overall residential development and redevelopment. The request also supports many of the policies in the comprehensive plan as it relates to multifamily residential areas and housing. And all these policies can be found in your packet. Furthermore, we sent this application out for agency review, and there were no formal objections. And all these comments can be found in your packet for review as well. And with that, planning commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you. I believe the applicant is here.
Good evening. For the record, Addie Clark, 400 North Ashley Drive, Tampa, Florida, 33603. And Gillian did a great job at orienting you as to where this site is, just one block north of Kennedy Boulevard and east of Tampania Avenue, within the central Tampa Planning District. And I'd also like to note that it's not in the coastal hazard. The request before you tonight is the change of the future land use of these two parcels from residential 20 to community mixed-use 35, which would provide a smoother tapered density transition from the existing UMU 60 designation to the south, along with West Kennedy Boulevard, along West Kennedy Boulevard, excuse me, and R20 to the north. In effect, the CMU would act as that needed middle step when going from the low-density R20 to UMU 60 along the arterial roadway. And this map shows just how the new CMU 35, one block north of Kennedy Boulevard, is not new or isolated. In fact, the CMU 35 is just one block away from the east side of Arminia Avenue where you can see CMU 35 exists today. Due to the parcel's proximity to Kennedy Boulevard and active arterial street, the property offers high visibility and a lack of privacy that often accommodates property offers high visibility and a lack of privacy that often accommodates areas that are designated medium-to-high-density residential use, not the low-density residential use which is allowed today under R 20. CMU allows not only for a mix of uses, as Gillian mentioned, but for the density and intensity that is appropriate and needed in this area. Here's an aerial view looking east towards downtown, and the two parcels under your consideration tonight are outlined in red dash line, and it's important to note that the two parcels have existed as commercial parking tied to the adjacent parcel along Kennedy, noted with the red pin there, for about over 20 years. These three parcels have functioned under the same ownership for that long as well. Since the three parcels have, are, and intended to continue to function together, which we'll go over in just a minute, it's appropriate to note that these two parcels act as that step down, or that transition between the intense UMU 60, noted with the red pin, and the residential uses on the other side of North A Street. And as mentioned, even though we are focusing on those two northern parcels in the dash outlined red, it's important to look at the total picture. The three parcels shown are all under the same ownership and are currently in the PD rezoning process filed as one united plan. The intention is to provide multifamily housing with ground-floor commercial office uses, which will better activate this corner of Kennedy from a pedestrian perspective. And again, Tyler did a great job with the previous application, highlighting just how vital it is to develop along transit emphasis and mixed-use corridors. On that note, the subject parcels are right along Kennedy, where intensification is both encouraged and appropriate. The MAP amendment for these two parcels is that first step in the PD rezoning process that intends to provide density in a location in a manner that is desperately needed, especially so close to the central business district. Again, this is an overall, an opportune area to create new housing and jobs within one block of a major corridor. The next few slides list a few of the many Comprehensive Plan policies that support this MAP amendment, but to quickly go over a few, the central Tampa Planning District promotes livable city that fosters vibrant, higher-density lifestyle through a mix of uses, especially for underutilized sites such as this. The site's location, adjacent to a mixed-use and transit emphasis corridor, encourages medium and higher-density housing to serve citywide demand while supporting other modes of transportation. And finally, the goal of this amendment is to increase housing opportunities while promoting walking and transit use, especially so close to employment centers such as the CBD. And again, due to the parcel's locations adjacent to Kennedy Boulevard and only one block away from the CMU 35 pattern just to the east, we respectfully ask for your approval that this amendment is both comparable and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. We didn't have anyone sign up for comment on this one, so I will turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, discussions.
Commissioner Fernandez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you plan to keep the retention pond that's on the property?
I know, I believe our several engineers who are going through that PD rezoning process are looking that into more detail, but I know that'll be looked at definitely in more detail and make sure that there's proper retention for what's planned.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Bernstein.
Can you get your slide presentation back up and take us back to slide three, I think it is? And if not...
Is it just going to go on its own?
There we go.
Let's...
Yeah, so, right there.
That one, okay.
So, this actually is a comment that's probably more appropriately directed at staff, and maybe it's an agenda item for our next retreat, but can we at some point look at a distinguishing color other than light lavender and dark lavender? Because after about 7:00 PM, the light lavender begins to look darker, and the dark lavender begins to look lighter, and I can't quite make them out. So, just maybe something to note for future reference. That's all I have. Thank you.
Either that or Coca-Cola for Commissioner Bernstein at his seat. All right. Any more comments or questions on this item from the commissioners? Not seeing any lights. Then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions. Not everyone at once, no. Commissioner Bernstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time I would move that we find TACPA 22-29 consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and we pass that recommendation along to the Tampa City Council for their consideration.
Commissioner Buzza.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion to consistency finding and a second to that motion by Commissioner Buzza. The motion was made by Commissioner Bernstein, by the way. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Or we will? Not seeing any, then I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Cress?
Yes.
Saria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, 9 to 0.
Thank you. All right. Next item of business is Action Item 2G, TACPA 22-30 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Land Use Policy 5.1.6, Floor Area Ratio Blending in Urban Villages Within the Central Planning District, and the presenter is Emily Phelan.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. This is TACPA 2230, which is a text amendment for land use policy 5.1.6. This was privately initiated, and this policy might look familiar to some of you, as it was previously amended by TACPA 2101, which expanded blending from within an urban village to a half-mile outside of an urban village, with the provision that the project is approved through a planned development and is at least one acre in size, and the provision cannot be applied to lands outside the central planning district. The proposed language would expand the proportionate weight of density and intensity to sites less than one acre, with the provision that the site must have frontage along an arterial Planning Commission Staff reviewed this and found it consistent with multiple Comprehensive Plan policies. The promotion of compact city form strategy to provide greater density and intensity near the urban villages, and greater flexibility in the development process will streamline the development of the city form encouraged by the Comprehensive Plan. With those in mind, Planning Commission Staff recommended that the text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant has one as well.
The applicant, please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, again, commissioners. Alex Shaler, 400 North Ashley Drive. For the record, Emily did a great job running through the background. I was going to touch on TACPA 2101, which was adopted in 2022 last year, which amended 5.1.6 most recently, to include that land within a half-mile outside of the urban village. The request we have before you tonight is a very, very minimal addition of language, and that's because a lot of the projects that we're seeing now, we're seeing smaller infill redevelopment sites. They're much more complex. They have a lot of different land use designations. So, again, this would benefit some of those smaller infill redevelopment sites that we're seeing more commonly now. So, the existing language, the way it works today, just to kind of tee this up, is there's four criteria that a site has to meet in order to blend their density. The first one is that they're located within the central Tampa Planning District. The second is that they're within a half-mile of an urban village, as we stated. The third is that they're part of a PD or part of a PDA, and the fourth is that they're at least one acre in size. The proposed language that we have before you with this amendment modifies one of those four criteria to permit an and/or situation, and so the proposed language includes, remains the same for that the project must be within the central Tampa Planning District, must be still within a half-mile of an urban village, it must be part of a PD or a PDA, none of that changes. What we're proposing is that the project, if it is not one acre in size, that it maintains frontage on an arterial roadway, and that that itself would classify it as part of the total four criteria for being eligible for density blending. And I want to show you two examples. I want to show how this policy can be applied and how it cannot be applied, to clear up any kind of confusion. So, if you look at this, what we have before you, and this is actually an example of the MAP amendment that you just recommended for consistency, with a little bit of a variation. So, for this example, we have those two residential parcels to the north of that parcel along Kennedy Boulevard, and as you can see, what we're using for this example is a cluster of residential parcels outlined in yellow. So, all of these parcels could be filed together as part of a PD. They're all within the central Tampa Planning District. They're all within a half-mile of the West Tampa Urban Village, it's just north of the subject site. And however, this site is not greater than an acre, and it's not located along an arterial roadway. So, this language, as it exists today and as it would be amended, would not apply to these parcels. In contrast, this is the application that you just heard by Addie. If you look at this, and we're dropping the eastern portion of the previous example and picking up that parcel along Kennedy Boulevard, as you can see, all of these could be filed as a PD. They are filed as a PD. It's located within the central Tampa Planning District. It is within a half-mile of an urban village. It is not greater than an acre. The site is less than an acre in total. However, it does contain that frontage along Kennedy Boulevard, and I think Addie made a couple of good points that I'd like to use for this text amendment as well, is that the Comprehensive Plan includes many policies about directing development and intensification along these transit emphasis corridors and in some of these bigger arterials, and what this amendment would allow smaller sites to do is effectively front-load the density so that it could be located at those busy intersections opposed to further within the neighborhood. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. All right, we didn't have anyone sign up for comment on this one, so I will again turn it over to the commissioners for questions, discussion items, comments. Not seeing any, going once, going twice, then I will close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we find CP 22-30 consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to the Tampa City Council.
All right, Commissioner Buzza.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to consistency finding by Commissioner Fernandez, a second to that motion by Commissioner Buzza. Are there any questions or clarifications, comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any, I will ask the clerk to go on ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Cress?
Yes.
Saria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, 9 to 0.
Thank you. All right. Our last item is 2H, TACPA 22-31 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Accessory Dwelling Units, and the presenter is Alvaro Gabaldón. Gabaldón.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Can everybody hear me? I'm calling remote.
Yes, we can, sorry.
No worries, thank you. I suppose I will be sharing my screen. Okay, my name is Alvaro Gabaldón, Planning Commission Staff. I am here presenting the text amendment to Tampa's Comprehensive Plan 22-31. This amendment is about policies and pertains to policies and other references to accessory dwelling units found throughout the Comprehensive Plan. So, some background on this amendment, it is publicly initiated. It aligns with some changes that the City of Tampa Planning Staff have been working on pertaining to ADUs in the Land Development Code for the city, and it modifies existing language regarding accessory dwelling units in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. As I said at the beginning, we're amending existing policies to use consistent language when referring to accessory dwelling units, so right now, if you were to flip through our plan, you'll find terms like accessory second units, accessory apartments. So, we have basically struck all those other iterations of the idea of an ADU, and ADU is the phrase that is being used to refer to these accessory use units. I just coined another one, don't use that, ADUs. Separate existing. We also separated the existing policy LU 9.2.4 into two policies, thus creating a new policy to clarify ADU eligibility and regulation. And then, again, we went through the land use category matrix to make sure that we were using the phrase ADUs in a consistent manner. So, I mentioned we separated 9.2.4 into two policies. So, here you can see the portion of 9.2.4 that we've stricken is the last sentence of the policy here. So, the resulting policy would just be the first sentence that has no strike through, and then I will flip to the new policy that is thus created from that separated sentence, which the resulting number is 9.2.7. So, this is just basically saying that ADUs may only be considered in flu designations that allow residential development. For the purposes of calculating density, ADUs shall not be counted as a separate dwelling unit. Again, this regulation of ADUs is not new. The fact that it's living in its own policy now is the new change. So, staff reviewed these proposed languages in conjunction with City of Tampa staff and have found it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan based on the following policies, mostly policies that have to do with coordinating with local jurisdictions about development regulation and maintenance of the plan, and then also ensuring that development regulations are sensitive to trends and needs of Tampa's neighborhoods and removing any undue delays. So, again, these changes are meant to clarify and make ADUs, the plan's approach to ADUs just, I guess, from a terminology standpoint, consistent throughout. So, with that, Planning Commission Staff recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. There was no one sign up for public comment on this one, so to the commissioners for questions, comments, or discussion items. Everyone has nothing, so I will go on ahead and close public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time I would move that we find TACPA 22-31 consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and that we pass that recommendation along to the Tampa City Council for their consideration.
All right, Commissioner Saria.
I will second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to consistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, a second to that motion by Commissioner Saria. Are there any questions or clarifications, comments from the commissioners? Seeing none at this time, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Cress?
Yes.
Saria?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, 9 to 0.
All right, that was our last item of business, so thank you, everyone, for joining us at 8:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned.